I'll call the meeting to order. Before we start, let me read the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. The other minutes on your packets from the special called meeting July 10th, which was a replacement meeting for last month's standard meeting. Any corrections or additions? I have a motion and a second. If there are no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Preliminary and final plats.
Okay, item D1, starting on page one, is the Patterson property off of Day Road by Anna Patterson. I have received a letter from Ricky Younger, a proponent for the owner, and they've requested this item be removed from the agenda, so I would recommend that you take an action to remove the item without prejudice.
Do I have a motion to remove the item from the agenda without prejudice? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion to remove without prejudice is approved.
The next item is item E on page four, preliminary and final plat, minor subdivision, the Hatchet property off of Sevierville Road and Temple Road. Once again, I received a letter from the owner requesting this item be removed from the agenda this evening, so I would recommend that you take an action to remove the item without prejudice.
We have a motion and a second to remove the item without prejudice. There's no comments. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Miscellaneous items, Ward property off of Water Oak Drive.
Yeah, the Ward property is actually off Water Oak Drive and an unopened right-of-way called Walker Avenue by Bruce and Deborah Ward. If you want to look at the plat with me, you'll see there's two lots, and they're actually calling it the Reso Division of Lot 36, Hinkle Estates. It was kind of a lost track of Hinkle Estates that the Wards purchased many years ago. As you can, if you look at it, you can see that if you take the lot line out between the two, that it's kind of a flag-shaped lot and actually touched the Water Oak Drive with the back of the property off of Walker Avenue. Bruce McClellan's here to answer any questions, if you have him as well. He's the surveyor on this project. But he did, we did confirm after Bruce told us that Walker Avenue actually shows up as an unopened right-of-way on three previous plats of record. I guess the question coming to the planning commission, the reason that John and I couldn't sign this as a staff-approved plat was because of the fact that Walker Avenue is just that, it's an unimproved right-of-way. The county road actually ends, if you'll see where it says on the plat, Reso Division of lots 42 and 43, Oliver Pickens Farm, Lot Number Two. That's the Ward's family house, they actually live there. And the county road, I think I have a number, what'd I write, 200 and some feet? The county road actually physically ends 230 feet away from this property line where it's, where the W on Walker Avenue is. That property line there actually has a gate that they use, and there is a drive there. It's an old gravel driveway. It's been there of long standing. It was actually there before they divided Hinkle Estates, and it was there before they divided the Oliver Pickens Farm, from my understanding. It was an old road to a sawmill, I believe is what Darris told me. And that right-of-way also contains a water line for Knox Chapman, and they go in there and service that line on occasion. And that line actually is the service, it's a big line, it services all of Hinkle Estates. I don't know what that means in terms of whether or not, you know, it's a public access or not. About three years ago, we had a, well, it sounded like a similar situation, but turned out not to be. That subdivision was, let me see if I can find it.
To Oliver Pickens?
No, no, the previous one in 2012. The planning commission heard about an unimproved right-of-way off of Kendra Drive that Louisville later adopted. At the time, there was a farm in the back, and the gentleman that owned the farm wanted to use the unimproved right-of-way down to the county road to bring hay in and out. When the neighbors found out that lived on either side, they wanted the unimproved right-of-way closed because they had used it as their side yards and maintained it for years. Before the planning commission took any action, we asked the county attorney for an opinion, and he sent that to another attorney, and we got an opinion back based on state law and what his findings were, that the county had no claim to that property passed where they maintained the road. So not only did they not have a claim to it, they couldn't open it to the gentleman in the back, but they couldn't close it and give it to the two people either. So it just kind of was left alone. Planning commission took no action. In this case, the right-of-way exists. The proponents on either side, Lot Two is actually the Ward's, they're one of the people that own on one side of it. In Lot 17, nobody's made a claim to that right-of-way. They don't necessarily want it, and they're not asking the county to close it. It's on three separate plats. It has a roadway of long standing on it. It has a gate, so you can tell someone's been using it for years and years and years. It hasn't been blocked up by anybody, and it is used for a water company utility. I guess we're just trying to understand if it would be okay to divide Track 36R off of what is shown as Walker Avenue.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, and the proponents are here as well, the Wards are here.
Commissioner McClellan, the Walker Avenue, does it show up in the plat of, that was a subdivision plat that we're looking at, that Walker Avenue runs, would currently be described on that subdivision plat, correct?
Correct, and actually, I've got, they were back since 1962 is when the Oliver Pickens Farm was originally subdivided. And the road, it kind of makes a little wide up there about where you said the 259 feet was, and that's where the county, or the developers stopped the road at the time, but there was a driveway coming down this 50-foot right-of-way into, Doug explained it well.
All right, so it is a defined driveway or roadway on the subdivision plat?
On the subdivision plat and the tax maps.
Okay. Doug, then, I don't understand, what is the question? Because it's not a public, because it's not declared by the county?
It's not, it's unimproved right-of-way. And from what I understand, from our interpretation, an unimproved right-of-way, we can't give it away, we have no claim to it, but at the same time, we can't close it and tell the gentleman he can't use it for a driveway to the county road. It is what it is. It's an unimproved right-of-way on the plat, no one's making claim to it. I don't know whether they collect taxes on it or not, I don't believe they do. But from the lot line on 36R where the letter W is, there's a gate. If you travel 230 feet on gravel is when you meet the county road. Our regulations state you either have to be off of an easement, or you have to divide property off of a county road. The county road ends 230 feet shy of their property, but there's no obstructions, it's a road of long standing. It shows up on multiple plats as a right-of-way. They're simply asking if they can divide off of that right-of-way.
Question, Doug. You said there was a gate, where is the gate?
It is right there on that property line where you see the W at Walker Road. There's a little property line there that separates Walker Avenue from 36R.
Okay.
There's actually a, physically a gate that has been there, I would say, for years and years.
Okay, and down 259 feet away where the county road is, there is no gate?
Oh, no. The county road is actually 230 feet from the edge of pavement to the gate.
Okay, thank you.
And it is maintained by their family of long standing. It's never been closed as far as I understand it.
I'd like to add one thing to this, and it is state law, that a dedication of a right-of-way on a plat does not constitute acceptance by the county of that right-of-way for maintenance. In other words, if you approve a plat and it shows a right-of-way on it, and it's unimproved, and the county doesn't take any action to take it over, it is not a county responsibility. And that's the point that Doug was making. Just because it was on previous plats doesn't mean it is a quote "county" right-of-way. It's just a designated, dedicated right-of-way that has not been accepted.
Is the issue because there is not a deeded, to 36R, that there is not a deeded recognition of that right-of-way or a deeded statement of the right-of-way?
The deeds would clearly pick up that it touches the unimproved right-of-way of Walker Avenue. That's not the issue. And it's platted three separate times where that parcel, whatever it was at the time, touched that unopened right-of-way. I mean, unimproved right-of-way, I want to be clear, it is open. It's just unimproved from a county standpoint. Now, there is an improvement on there, it's a gravel road that somebody put on there at some point in history, and there is another improvement as well, there's a public water line that crosses that same right-of-way. But the county doesn't have a claim to it past the end of the pavement, which is 230 feet away. We're not opposed to the division of property per se, but we would like some clarification from the planning commission, whether that's something that we're allowed to approve in the future. This is kind of new territory.
If we approve this, then who would be responsible for the maintenance of the right-of-way?
There would not necessarily be anybody that we could make responsible for that. I think it would be within their best interest. And I did, I was informed today that when Darris went to Nine on One to get an address, they actually addressed it off of Walker Avenue.
But if we don't grant this, then 36R does not have any access to get to a county road?
Well, you'd have to take the lot line out and leave it alone, or find another way to get in there.
Yeah, so they would not, they would not be able to subdivide it then?
I mean, that would be one of your options.
Let me give a little analogy, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Little analogy to this. When we have a standard road within a 50-foot right-of-way, the roadbed itself stops short of a property line. In other words, the edge of the pavement, you've got an edge of the pavement, sometimes 12 to a little bit more than 12 feet to the edge of the property, which is the property line, that's the edge of the right-of-way also. People put driveways across that right-of-way, but in that situation, the county's actually accepted it and maintains not only the road, but claims the right-of-way. This is somewhat of a situation where you would put a driveway from the edge of a pavement down a dedicated right-of-way, but the county just has not accepted it yet. I don't, you know, this is such a gray area that we don't, we can't come to a real conclusion on whether that is a similar situation of just putting it from edge of pavement to your lot line, or if this is going across no man's land that we have no authority over. And that's the question now. Do you want to accept that there was a dedication of right-of-way here, and that was sufficient for them to put a private drive, a connection, down that right-of-way to their property line to allow division? And that's the question before you.
Commissioner French?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm familiar with the piece property in my district over there, and it's been there for, ever since I can remember. And we keep, we keep referring to it as unimproved, but actually, I guess in the county's eyes, it's unimproved. But I believe the Wards have maintained that thing since they've lived there. They put gravel on it and maintained it because it is platted on three plats, and they've maintained it and they've used it for years, so I personally don't see a problem with what the request is. Gosh, how long have you all, you've lived there for?
Seventy-six.
Since 76, that's when I came out of the service, so I, you know, that, it sounds like it's grandbothered, although it can't be grandbothered, but...
Could I ask a question? Have you ever used that property to access Parcel 36?
Every day.
Where the gate is?
Yeah.
You always, you've been using that for access in there? Well, you're right, there is some standing on that.
There's some state law on that, isn't there? If you use something, adverse possession or something. I was gonna go a little further with John's analogy. With the right-of-way, every, let's say there's a standard 50-foot right-of-way on a county road section, like this one Water Oak Drive, take any one in the county. If the county road is 22 feet, that'd be 11 feet off of center on each side. That would leave you some 13 feet before you got to the edge of the right-of-way from the back of the curb. In every single case of a driveway, they come across down to the county road, across that right-of-way. A section of 13 or 14 or 15 feet of private driveway that the county wouldn't fix anyway. It would be up to the private landlord to maintain that. The county might fix the tile under the front of the driveway if it affected the drainage of the county roadway. If there was no tile, then the driveway maintenance would be all on the owner. In this case, the driveway's not 13 feet, it's 230 feet. That's the gray area.
Commissioner Kirby?
So the only question we have got is 36R. What happens down to 36R1?
It has county road frontage.
Is it, that's where you got Water Oak down here, that is a road?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only question we've got up here, and then we've been in this before down in Morganton Acres on the right-of-way with the city mayor two or three years ago, that they wanted to close it, and then they wouldn't let us close it because it run to another piece of property, so that we couldn't close that road because that would access other piece of property when the city took it in. So, and these people have been maintaining this, how many feet was it from the black down to this gate?
About 230, 230 feet.
And they have been mowing it and been keeping it clean, and it's got rock on it and stuff?
Since they lived there, not 76, yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve this.
Seconding it.
Okay. If I could, let me ask a question. Is there any notes we need to put on the plat?
I think the plat will stand as it is. We can put a note on the plat that was approved by planning commission approval and accepted the plat as it is. It's not, I don't think it's a variant situation, I think you're just accepting the plat. I think that'll actually give them better standing in the future if someone comes to make claim to that right-of-way, that they'll say, well, we got permission from the planning commission to have our driveway located in this location.
I see absolutely no problem with it. I can understand the dilemma that staff was in in trying to approve it because it's not, but it's defined on other subdivision plats.
I'm, can I have an hour time here, I'm sorry?
The driveway was defined in the adjoining subdivision plat.
Yes.
So to me, I see it as a drive, a roadway driveway, but nobody claims ownership to it. It's the only real problem.
Let me just enlighten you just a little bit more. You know, when I look at this from a planner's standpoint, what they were doing when they did that subdivision, and we ask people to do it to this day, they were stubbing out to a future development, and they just swung the road around to the right and never came down there because maybe they did or didn't, they might have had another use for that property at the time, might have been someone else's hands, but we still, to this day, if someone has a piece of property and they're putting a certain number of lots in, and they think they're gonna develop the property next door, we ask them to do these same kind of unimproved right-of-ways. Now, we try to get them to pave to the end of them before the county takes it, but this situation on a plat is not that uncommon.
Can I ask, one more question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we approve this, and which I brought it to prove it, if they decide down the road to just eliminate, just forget 36R because it's at 30,000 feet and it can't be touched, but the three acres, if this three acres, 3.740 acres, if they decided down the road to make two lots out of it, we need to make notes saying that this right-of-way somehow, because when it gets here, all you want to do is charge them for the plat, you know? So anything that we can put in here to make sure if they do want to do something to this property, they can use that right-of-way as a street coming in and then have a hats.
You understand what I'm trying to, John?
I do, and that's one of our concerns about approving something like this. This is not an uncommon situation, but you don't see it that much because most people don't go beyond a standard road when they divide. If this were to be re-divided and as a standard subdivision on 36R, let's say into four lots, I think at that time, whoever's making the division would have to bring that right-of-way up to county road standards, and we might put that note on the plat.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, because we don't want to lock them down, that they can't do something with this piece of property a year from now, or they might want to put two lots or three, as long as it's under the 30,000 feet, and looks like it would work out four lots to me.
We could put a note on there, simply say any additional...
Make some kind of note, that will protect them down the road in case they really, because when it comes back to us, we will have a mess, so let's try to get it right up front. And then if this happens down the road in someone else's, we'll have something to fall back on.
Yes, sir.
So that's my, that's the way I'd say, with the recommendations of some way of, do we need to do this tonight, or?
All right, let's just amend the motion to approve the plat with the addition of a statement to the plat about future subdivisions will necessitate bringing...
That they will bring that right-of-way up to county standards and so forth, okay?
With the addition of any, any more lots off of 36R, this section of Walker Avenue will be brought to county road standards.
Is that a, for the second, Commissioner French?
Well, I was gonna make the, add a comment that I don't, I think we're concerned positively about the county having to improve the right-of-way, or I don't think the Wards are coming to ask the county to take over the right-of-way. I think what they're planning on doing is they're planning on doing what they've been doing for 38 years, you know? They're planning on taking care of the right-of-way like they have for the last 38 years, so I don't think we need to be concerned about whether the county's gonna be improving that or not, but...
I don't think we're concerned about...
All I'm saying, we need to make sure they're protected if they want to do something in the future.
Exactly, lay in the future, yeah.
Everything will be just fine.
And I agree with that.
Okay. Do the proponents understand what we, what we are suggesting?
Yeah.
If you, in the future, if you want to subdivide it, recognize that the right-of-way is gonna have to be brought up to standards.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not landlocking you or anything, but I mean, it's, the right-of-way sooner in the future may have to be addressed if you try to subdivide it.
Three, I talked to over with Mr. Thompson in the past, the former, and years ago, he had indicated he would sign his part over to us, that he don't need a loan, and we talked such a thing, that this happened, and they indicated they will, so they're not gonna do it, and they have to help out now.
Yeah, he's something I believe is the lot, saying the, the other side of the...
Yeah, I just want to clarify that...
Yeah, they're okay with it.
Yeah. The neighbor's okay with what they're saying, but the other gentleman doesn't have any rights on that right-of-way either. He doesn't own to the center of it or anything, okay.
Commissioner Kirby, your light's still on, do you have anything further?
Your light's on.
Oh, sorry. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the plat, subject to a statement being added to the plat concerning the Walker Avenue right-of-way and future subdividing of that property. Bruce, do you have a comment?
I have to abstain on the vote on this one.
We recognize your abstention, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Bruce, for showing up to help us out on it. Discussion of proposed amendments for setback and separation requirements for telecommunication towers. Roger?
Well, my memo's really brief, but basically, that's just the resolution that reflects the discussion we had in the prior meetings about possible changes to Section 7.4D7A as far as separation and setback distances for cellular towers. And it's to read as follows, to be changed to, tower separation shall be measured from the base of the tower to the lot line of the off-site uses. Separation distance shall be 85 feet plus one foot for every one foot greater than 75 feet in tower height, whichever's greater, in relation to any existing residential use lot, use or platted subdivision lot intended predominantly for residential use. And that's before you tonight for possible recommendation to be sent on to the county commission.
All right, this is the resolution that we discussed two months ago. Roger has put it together pretty much as we agreed in that meeting, establishing a new minimum separation distance, and trying to become more realistic. Roger, did you have, look at the past records and see what the impact this would have?
I did, I didn't go too far back, it was really big, but I did look on the current ones that started this discussion at the BZA, and it would have helped both of those situations become a conforming setback without having to have relief.
Good. That's what the BZA was hoping to accomplish.
Yes.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Make a recommendation to send it forth to the county commission.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Send it on to the county commission with unanimous approval and recommendation for action. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
John, discussion of commercial zoning.
Okay, this is an item that the chairman had asked to be put on as a continuing item. I think the idea here is that we're gonna have some changes on the planning commission in the near future, and to let the other members that will be coming on to catch up, let's not get too far ahead of them. And so I'm not bringing anything new to this, but if you wish to discuss it, it is on the agenda as a continuing item.
Do you have a comment?
No.
Your light's on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
John, as I've given it thought, I don't want to get into a big discussion on it tonight, but I guess one of the things that occurs to me, perhaps before we even address the issue of rezoning, I kind of would like to revisit our standards for appearance. And that would apply, Roger, to exist to the RAC. Because the more I've thought about it, if we ever do get to the point where we're going to allow any commercial development in what, in the more rural areas on the arterials, one of the things we hear, hear over and over in the seminars we go to, we don't have to accept low-quality development. So I guess kind of as a prerequisite, before we ever went to any more commercial, I would like us to take a hard look at the appearance of commercial buildings. And I know we already have lighting standards in place, but one of the big complaints has been lighting. I'm not suggesting that we need to change our lighting, but let's take a look at lighting to see whether there's anything that we need to improve. I guess I... Uh, I guess I, I look around at lighting even in, in the, uh, urban areas, and I have some problems with what is allowed on, uh, commercial businesses in terms of the way lighting affects the roadways and siding. I sure don't want that to happen out, further out in, on arterial right-of-ways, so, I guess it'd take a hard look at lighting, so. I just throw that in the hopper for both of you to think about as we move down that miss. Anybody have any thoughts or comments, or want to shoot me down on that, that would be fine? If not, John, your, the floor is yours on, uh, other reports.
I just want to, uh, point out to you that you have a separate, sorry, that's not it, a separate, yeah, it is, separate memo about the planning commission BZA training opportunities. There are two of them, one is rather far away, it's in Jefferson City, uh, the other one's close by in Farragut, and the two dates are July thirty-first and August thirteenth. Uh, the one in Farragut would actually give you your four hours of training if you were to go to that, uh, but the National Flood Insurance Program is, isn't that exciting, Roger?
Very.
He's being sarcastic. But, anyway, those are two opportunities. Uh, I will have an opportunity coming up probably in September or October called Population at the Speed of Life, uh, it's something I've been working on, uh, I developed it for presentation to Tennessee Public Health Association, uh, in the East Tennessee Division, and it's got good reviews there, presented it to the Bar Association in Blunt County, and to the Blunt County Community Health Initiative, and, uh, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of slides, but it moves very quickly, and I can get it done in about an hour and fifteen minutes, so, we'd have maybe an hour and fifteen minutes plus fifteen-minute question, and I can give you an hour and a, hour and a half at some future date on that.
Stretch it out to two hours?
Well, maybe we can bring some crystals in and we'll feed you crystals or something, that's about all I can afford. Coffee and doughnuts, well, we'll see what we can do with the budget, with the big budget that the county commission has given me to work with, we'll see. Okay, I'll take up the collection. Another, another opportunity is, uh, many of you, I think, have heard of Ed McMahon, the, not the Ed McMahon with the million dollars, but the Ed McMahon that talks about the quality of community development, and he, uh, I can access a presentation he did for ET Competes, East Tennessee Competes, is, which is a carry-on from Plan East Tennessee. I've done that for the Lewisville Planning Commission, I could do it with you. It addresses probably a little bit of what Ed was talking about, that you can set high standards for your community on what it looks like, and businesses will comply, because businesses want to make money, and, uh, they know that, uh, a good community can actually help them make money, and he'll give examples of where, where you set the high standards, the sites actually make more money than their standard design. Uh, and if you'd like, I can have that for the next meeting, well, let me put it this way, have it for the September meeting.
And he's not a good speaker.
He's a very good speaker. He's actually been to Blunt County several times, uh, actually twice, I think, both of them at the airport, made presentations at the planning commission several years ago. Did anybody go to the one that was in Knoxville? Oh, that's right, okay. Okay, that was a good presentation, and, uh, yeah, I'm not sure I can give you double credit on that, but I'll be glad to have you come in and at least audit it again. Uh, I get something out of it every time I watch it. So, let's say in September, we schedule that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Uh, John, this, the National Flood, Roger, have you been to that presentation, or either one of you been to that?
I've been to several different things FEMA associated with, I believe this is gonna be a condensed version of what I've been to. It, it would give you a pretty good feel of what the FEMA pro- program, what they're trying to accomplish, and, and, uh, the direction they're going. I don't think it'd get real too in-depth, because it can get really in-depth. It'd be hard to cover a lot of it in one day.
Okay, I was just, I was thinking about going, I don't need the, I don't think I need the training hours, but it might be worthwhile going to sit, sit through it.
We do have national, we do have floodplain regulations that go through the planning commission for recommendation to county commission, we, that's usually a set piece, uh, there's not much leeway in it, and, uh, we, we present it to you, and I think the last time was what, about five years ago or so?
Two thousand and seven, they made FEMA, uh, is it FEMA?
FEMA, FEMA.
FEMA, they, they made changes to the state regulations, and Blunt County's just adopted the state minimum for, for the program. You can always go above and beyond.
Well, I guess, I always stay interested just because of the community I live in, because...
Yeah, I don't want to downplay it too much. I used to work on it, and it was deathly boring, and Roger works on it, his eyes glaze over, but it is something that you probably need to know about, and, uh, maybe Roger can do an hour condensed version one of these days.
Possibly, I'm probably, I'm, I'm probably gonna go to it, and I'm probably gonna, I've asked our, our codes official to go to it too, because a lot of it has to do with, um, how things are constructed within, in a flood zone, so, I think it'd be good for, for him to see.
That doesn't, that doesn't require registration either, does it?
I don't think so. No reservations required, just show up.
Alright, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned, thank you. Again, Bruce, thank you for showing up tonight, I know it's a struggle. Get well, quick.